Check, check, check.
Go ahead and mute it again.
...
Okay, thank you. Welcome to the Wednesday, September 3rd Select Board Regular Session. Please, oh, we are being recorded. Please rise for the glitch. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I apologize in behalf of the Board for our tardy start. We did update the agenda from 6:30 to 7:00. I do realize it is after 7:30. And we were in executive session, so apologies for the late start. But we are ready for you all. And first bit of business is reading some proclamations. So it is National Suicide Prevention Month and also National Senior Center Month. So if I will, I will read the first proclamation if I could get a volunteer to read the second.
I'll read the second.
Thank you, David. Okay. National Suicide Prevention Month Proclamation by the Select Board. Whereas September is known globally as Suicide Prevention in Action Month, the National Suicide Prevention in Action Month proclamation was created to raise the visibility of mental health resources and suicide prevention services available in our community. The goal is to start the conversation about mental health and the impact of suicide to help de-stigmatize the conversation and help connect people with appropriate support services. And whereas according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, suicide is the second-leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 10 and 34, with more than 48,000 people dying by suicide annually in the United States, with a daily rate of 132. In 2023, more than 626 Massachusetts residents died by suicide. And whereas every suicide directly impacts a minimum of 100 additional people, including family, friends, coworkers, neighbors, and community members. And whereas the town of Swamps got publicly places its full support behind those who work in the fields of mental health, education, and law enforcement. And whereas global organizations like Hope for the Day, as well as the town's local mental health partners, serve on the front lines of the war that many still refuse to discuss as stigma regarding suicide and mental health issues are far too prevalent. And whereas we encourage all residents to take the time to understand the importance of mental health education and recognize that taking care of ourselves and others includes taking care of mental health. Now therefore, on behalf of the entire Select Board, we do hereby proclaim September 2025 as National Suicide Prevention in Action Month in the town of Swambscott, Massachusetts, and encourage all citizens to join us in this worthy observance. And witness hereof, we have hereon to set our hands and cause to be affixed the great seal of the town of Swambscott, Massachusetts, this third day of September 2025, signed by the Swambscott Select Board.
Thanks, Katie. National Senior Center Month, the proclamation by the Select Board. Whereas since 2007, National Senior Center Month is celebrated every year in September as recognized by the National Council on Aging and National Institute of Senior Centers. To celebrate senior centers across the country and incredible work they do to enrich and extend the lives of older adults. And whereas the Swambscott Senior Center is committed to being an inclusive community and welcoming of all people, regardless of their race, religion, sexual orientation, and gender identity, and recognizes that we are a diverse community. And whereas the town of Swambscott supports the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. And whereas the origin, the origin of National Senior Center Month can be found in National Senior Center Week, which was first celebrated annually in May 1979 to recognize the more than 10,000 senior centers throughout the nation and gain wide support through organizations such as the National Council on Aging, the U.S. Conference of Mayors Aging Task Force, and the Full Senate and House Select Committees on Aging. And whereas in 1985, President Ronald Reagan signed the first Senior Center Week Presidential Proclamation with the support of the National Institute of Senior Centers. And by 2007, the idea behind National Senior Center Week became so popular that NISC expanded the celebration of senior centers to an entire month by designating each September to be the month of celebration. And whereas in 2021, the town of Swambscott appointed a full-time director to lead the senior center and has double-digged budget. And whereas the town of Swambscott has a senior center that focuses on social, educational, and wellness programs by providing seniors with a wide variety of enriching programming, nutritious meals, and low-cost transportation. And whereas the town of Swambscott is proud of our expanding senior community and understands that senior centers are paramount to the overall health of our senior citizens, particularly as the center strives to engage with isolated seniors, bringing them into community. And whereas Swambscott is embarking on an endeavor to create a state-of-the-art center for all ages, designed to address the needs of seniors together with all generations in one community center. And now therefore, by the virtue of the authority vested in the town administrator in each of the below Select Board members in the town of Swambscott, we hereby proclaim the month of September as National Senior Center Month in the town of Swambscott, Massachusetts, and encourage all faith-based and nonprofit organizations, residents, businesses, and public institutions to acknowledge, honor, value, and celebrate older adults' contributions to our community and to recognize the importance of those who serve them daily. And witness whereof, we have hereon to set our hands and cause to be affixed the great seal of the town of Swambscott, Massachusetts, this third day of September 2025.
Thank you, David. All right. We will both very worthy causes, although sort of opposite ends of the spectrum, both worth conversation in our daily lives. And thank you to Heidi and the staff at the Senior Center for continuing to provide excellent programming for our seniors. And thank you to our law enforcement and school staff and the Health Department for the work that they do related to calls to crisis in town and prevention to calls to crisis in town, recognizing all of our town departments that facilitate both of these proclamations. Moving on to the Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you. Give an abbreviated version if anybody wants the full version. It's posted within the tomorrow.
Perfect. Thank you.
Things moving right along. This weekend, the weekend of August 22nd through the 24th, saw dangerously high tides in surf at Swambscott's beaches due to the remnants of Hurricane Erin. Chief Casada would like to formally commend Officer Kevin Reen for lifesaving actions on Saturday, August 23rd, at Phillips Beach. While off-duty, Officer Reen demonstrated incredible courage, 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 and bravery in a critical situation by rescuing a distressed swimmer using his paddleboard. Also assisting in the rescue were members of the Swambscott Police Department, the Swambscott Fire Department, a harbor master, boatport ambulance, as well as the Phillips Beach lifeguards. It's amazing, really. Read it over there. Most of us know about Kevin anyways, and I'm not surprised. All right, community development. The Hadley. Delmar has received both state and federal approvals for Part 1 of the Historic Tax Credit Application. These approvals are important milestones in the process. The next step is to officially designate the building as a certified historic structure, a key requirement for accessing historic tax credits. The Delmar team is currently updating the schematic plans and is scheduled to share them publicly at the September 17th Select Board Hawthorne Reuse Public Forum. The Hawthorne Reuse Committee held its first public forum on Wednesday, August 20th, with a robust turnout of approximately 75 residents. The committee provided an overview of the process to date, outlined next steps, and welcomed a productive and respectful exchange of public input and questions. Community feedback continues to be a critical role in shaping the committee's ongoing work. A second public forum currently scheduled for September 18th. Residents are encouraged to share their input by completing the online survey or by filling out a paper copy of the questionnaire, which is available at the town hall or the Swambscott Public Library. Pine Street. A neighborhood housing submitted a comprehensive permit application, which is scheduled to be reviewed by the ZBA meeting on September 16th, 2025. The town has reached out to the Massachusetts Housing Partnership to request technical assistance. MHP will support the ZBA throughout the comprehensive permit process and identifying best practices for project review and conditioning. Building. The Building Department issued 116 permits and received close to $30,000 of revenue in the month of August. Library is discussing a possible repair cafe with the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. Library is interviewing for three opening positions. Actually, two of them have been filled, and the interviews are ongoing for the head of technical services, which is a full-time position. Health Department. Wednesday, August 27th, was the last beach sampling collection of the season administered by the Mass Department of Public Health Beaches Program. Senior Center. Theo Corangelo has been hired as a senior senior center's chief cook and bottle washer. Interesting. Right? Upcoming lunch and learn topics include fall prevention, dementia myths and realities, GLSS outreach, and shine, just to name a few. The Senior Center has taken possession of its new electric van. Don't go like that. Recreation. Although the summer movie night series has come to an end, Beetlejuice will be shown on Thursday, October 2nd, at 6:30 p.m. Movie nights are sponsored by Sam Walker's American Tavern. Swamptoberfest is this Saturday from 8:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. on the town hall lawn. The townwide yard sale and Port's Fest will be held on Saturday, September 20th. And the annual Swambscott Classics Car Show is scheduled for October 12th. Human Resources has been busy conducting interviews for multiple open positions, including town accountant, assistant town accountant, three firefighters, library head of technical services, land use and development planner. Additionally, the police department will be holding their oral boards on September 22nd. Presently, there are eight potential candidates. Also regarding the police department, Officer Wilson and Sora were recognized by the Massachusetts Chiefs of Police Association for their SRO success story. The Swambscott Police Department is currently conducting mandatory department-wide active shooting training, which will continue through September 4th at the former Hadley Elementary School. Fire Department Chief Archer has interviewed eight applicants for the three current vacancies. Public Works. National Water Main Cleaner Company and their subcontractor Engrease and Sons continue to replace compromised sewer mains as part of Phase 2-8 of the Stacy Brook Sewer System Improvement Projects. DPW staff remain busy painting crosswalks, lining athletic fields, replacing damaged asphalt sidewalks, raking town beaches, and pruning trees. The three-month UV pilot program concluded on Monday, August 18th. Kleinfelder, consultant for both the City of Lynn and Swambscott, is evaluating the data and will have a full report ready for presentation by the end of September. Trash. For this upcoming weekend, recycling only will be collected at the DPW Yard. Last weekend, DPW workers collect a recycling, metal, and styrofoam, filling 14 30-yard dumpsters and two DPW trucks. For the weekend of September 12th through the 14th, we will accept yard waste along with recycling. If you need assistance transporting your recycling to the DPW Yard, please contact Diane at dianakazie@swambscottma.gov or call her at 781-596-8850, extension 1226. Thank you, Diane.
Questions?
Do you want me to? I know David had asked me if we could give a brief update on the trash. So if you don't mind.
I have one question on crosswalks.
Sure.
If there's, if there are neighborhoods that feel that they need a crosswalk in their area, what's the protocol?
Contact Officer Reen.
Okay.
Yep. Don't talk about that. Some people think it's just as simple as painting a couple of white lines, but it's more complicated than that because we have to put the ramps in and that on both sides of the crosswalk.
Okay.
I had a trash update?
Trash update?
Please.
All right. So each week I give you an update on what we're collecting and what's going on, but I wanted to give you a brief overview of what's been happening over the last 10 weeks. So Republic Services' trash strike is entering its 10th week. Republic has contracts for trash pickup in 14 cities and towns across eastern Massachusetts, including Canton, Danvus, Gloucester, Ipswich, Lynfield, Malden, Manchester by the Sea, Marblehead, North Redden, Peabody, Swambscott, Wakefield, and Watertown. On July 18th, six communities, Canton, Danvus, Gloucester, Beverly, and Peabody, filed a joint complaint asking a judge to intervene in the strike, demanding Republic Services fulfill its contracts to pick up accumulating garbage and pay for the municipality's costs. Unfortunately, an Essex Superior Court Judge Kathleen McCarthy denied the motion while seeming to note she was hamstrung by the law and the realities of the situation. You know, because I was asked why we didn't join on that. And at the time, I thought it was more symbolic than anything else. Some, most of these communities that did file have in-house staff to work with. It would probably cost us a few dollars to join in that. All right. Also, Governor Mara Healy wrote to John Van der Ark, President Chief Executive Officer at Republic Services on August 18th, August 11th, demanding the company return to the bargaining table and negotiate in good faith to end the strike. That met with defairs, unfortunately. Republic Services jointly arranged to meet with the Teamsters last Thursday, October, August 28th. Negotiations included an additional new federal mediator joining the session. However, no settlement was reached. On Tuesday of this week, which was yesterday, Governor Healy expressed continued frustration with the company. I continue to be underwhelmed and disgusted by the way that Republic is engaged. They've got to get back to the table. We need this result. Once again, we thank the governor. Again, it's, we're not making any progress. We found out today, unfortunate news again, that Republic Teamsters voted down the company's latest offer by more than 84%. The 400 Republican employees have been on strike now for 65 days. So we're continuing to do our best, as I said, weekly updates, collecting recycling. It's still, I believe it's been a success. I know it's an inconvenience to a lot of people, but I also noticed that a lot of residents is, you know, helping out there, stepping up to help out their neighbors. You see pickup trucks coming back several times, picking up their neighbors. It's like, then sometimes you see fans, too.
I'm the driver for my neighborhood.
Um, Gina, could you just give a little insight as to why we just don't go with another company? I know we've talked about this a lot of times, but like relative to our cost of contract right now. I know we've talked about this a lot of times, but like relative to our cost of contract right now.
Right, so I think all of us, what I failed to mention is the fourteen communities we meet on a regular basis, and I think it's all our belief that if we were to reach out to another company now in desperate times, that they're going to hold us over a barrel whoever comes in to take care of.
And of those fourteen communities that are on strike right now, I don't know relative to other folks' contracts, but our contract is pretty favorable right now because we're at the tail end of a contract, which will be, need to be renegotiated, but we're in a very favorable position under this contract. So if we were to go off and renegotiate, we would absolutely see an increase cost.
Exactly, yep.
So I think that's important for everybody to understand also. So yes, this is an inconvenience, and for sure, the public is paying taxes for a service they're not receiving, but if we were to go out and retain that service right now under the conditions, there may be a change in.
Well, there will be a change, no matter what.
No matter what, yeah.
There is going to be a change in a financial.
A financial impact.
July one is one of our new.
Twenty-six.
Right, twenty-six, and we right now have a, a group together that's starting to work on the parameters for the new contract.
Exactly, we get with assistance from the DEP.
Right.
All right, we've got a grant. Just so the record, right now annually, we're paying one point one million dollars just for their services, and then we pay a tip and fee of a hundred and eight dollars per ton for trash disposal and eighty-five dollars a ton for recycling. As Katie mentioned, those are very favorable numbers.
What would the, what would the market bear today, Gino? Any, any sense?
I actually don't.
On tipping?
On tipping?
Just.
On cost of contract.
On cost of contract in general.
I don't know, yeah. But I probably could find out by one of these communities that has recently settled or signed a new contract. I'm sure they'd be happy to share that information.
If Wayne Spritz is listening to this meeting, he will get back to us in seconds.
Shortly. Uh, Gino, is there, are there any plans for Republic to pick up recycling as they, as they have trash? Maybe, maybe not weekly, but maybe every other week, or any, any discussions?
Oh, yeah, so I'm in contact with Dan Higgins on a three, four times a week. And as a matter of fact, two weeks ago, he offered to give me two trucks on a Saturday to come in and just pick up strictly recycling. And I declined that offer because I said, oh, it's just a political nightmare because there's no way they could finish the town with two trucks, and where would he start? He said, maybe we'll start on the main streets, and I said.
And then you're just going to have a bunch of phone calls.
Right, why not me?
Right, but I mean, can we, can we at least make the ask, you know, to build on that? Like, if we knew that we could get that, you know?
Well, more importantly, we're not working.
Once a week, you know, two trucks over the four weeks or something, you know, just go around town. Everyone's not going to get it at once, but everyone knows it's coming over the next month, something?
Yeah, I could ask.
I appreciate that enthusiasm.
Yeah, well, I worry about it because we have people, once they know it's not getting picked up, they know they have the option. I'd hate to see, you're going to leave your recycling out this week, and we don't know what the route is, and if they're going to do the whole town in three or four, it's going to take a couple of weeks. Recycling is just going to sit on the street for a while.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure with our awesome communication vehicles, we could identify where they would be and where they wouldn't be.
Wow.
Sounds like it'd be in.
I'd like to.
Yeah.
Give notice to Diane for stepping up. Diane took upon herself was saying she reached out, residents are contacting her if they're disabled, elderly, if they can't find a way. Then she found three residents in Swampscott that are willing to take their own pickup trucks to pick up people's recycling.
Yeah, it worked out real nicely.
Right.
I have a few extra names this week.
Exactly.
I think the other thing to recognize is the difference between communities who have transfer stations and who do not, because a lot of people have said, like, well, why do we not have that ability, but Marblehead does? And from my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is because they take the recycling to the transfer station, and then they can come back around to town quickly.
Right.
We have to go all the way.
To North Andover.
To North Andover, and so we can't do as many routes in the same time period. So that's a big difference between why other communities are having more benefits than we are because we don't have the, we don't have a transfer station that we have a relationship with close by.
Right, so what I'm working on now is trying, next week is yard waste pickup. So we've already put it out there that you can drop off your yard waste to the DPW Yard. But I'm still going to try to get a couple of trucks in to pick up the yard waste.
Yeah.
This week shouldn't be too bad. I'm worried about the next one in October when all the leaves start falling.
And it's one thing to, to take your recycling down to the DPW Yard in your trunk of your car, and it's another thing to put, you know, fifteen bags of leaves in the back of your car if you don't have the ability to do that, so.
Great point.
That's really.
Yep. So I wish I had better news for you regarding the strike, but unfortunately.
Well, you're doing a great job with it, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to all the folks at DPW. It is nice to see them every weekend.
Yeah.
I know.
A lot of fun with it.
I mean, it really, it does not, you would not walk around this town thinking we're in a town with a trash strike. You do not see trash anywhere. I mean, it's been seamless, so kudos to that. And I think that's part of the reason, too, that we're afraid to, to enter the recycling realm because what if, you know, we do that and then trash slips, you know?
Yeah.
I'd hate to see, you know, one sacrifice for the other, so I would prefer to have trash picked up personally, but.
And I have heard people, residents just say, I, I don't recycle now. I just put everything in trash because the trash gets picked up, and then I don't have to go to DPW Yard, and that's a shame.
Yeah.
It's a shame because there's a, there's a large gap between the tonnage on recycling.
Yep.
Well, besides the financial, it's also environmentally, it's disappointing.
Yeah.
Right.
But it is good to know that we have options.
We have options.
If you do want to be environmentally friendly to come down to the DPW.
Yeah.
And meet with a bunch of friendly guys.
All right, any other questions from the rest of the update outside of trash?
I have a couple.
Please, Danielle.
Gino, so my question, or a couple, Hadley.
Yes.
What is the plan to kind of just make sure it's kept in ship, ship, shape, like, good shape? Because I, I feel like it's getting a bit unruly, a little overgrown, a little bit, you know, just to the eye. What is the plan there?
I think we can get the DPW staff over there to clean it up.
Yeah, just to kind of.
The weeds and stuff in the building.
Yeah, and my other thought is, what is the plan for the playground structure that is currently at Hadley? Have we considered what we're going to do with that, where it's going to be moved? What's going to happen to it, the playground equipment?
We have not.
We have.
Okay.
But we will keep that, right. We're going to store it somewhere in the.
No, we have.
Oh, you have, all right. Marzy? Isn't some of it antiquated?
We are working with the Conservation Commission.
Located to Linscott Park. Right now, as you know, Linscott Park, the only play feature on it is the swing set, so we're looking to add or relocate the play equipment there.
Great.
Yeah.
Do you know the timeline, Marz? Any idea?
Well, so we're just waiting to see, once we finalize and we have a better timeline from the Delamar folks, then this way we'll plan accordingly.
Okay, and my reasoning for asking that question is I think that whatever the plan is, it, we should kind of get that out there in the public because I think people are, you know, when, when you look at the next topic and you think of Hawthorne reuse and whether or not, you know, people want to see playgrounds and things of that nature, if we're planning on doing something to augment our existing playground somewhere, that should be public knowledge, right? So that should be something we're communicating out and actively letting people know. I did have another question, let me just see where it is, sorry. On the Building Department, with the permits and, you know, thirty thousand in permit fees, do we have any idea of how comparable that is to prior to having Rich Baldacci on staff? That figure?
I don't, but I'm sure we have records of that. I can find out.
I would just be curious to see, since the hiring of, of Mr. Baldacci, I, I suspect that that number has gone up to that level because of him, and I just really want to understand if that's the case, and I'm guessing it is, but I'd like to.
It definitely is.
I'd like to know that.
Well, what is the process in that, is just, is Rich going out and saying, hey, you need a building permit? Or people come in and say, I need a building permit, I mean?
People are coming in, but we have two local inspectors that are driving around. If they drive around, well, actually, it's just one, Roger Enos. If he drives around and sees construction going on, he'll get out of his vehicle and walk up to the door. Check it, but to your point, I think most people knew for a while we didn't have a building commissioner.
Right.
So no one was guarding the handout, so we pull it from it.
Right.
But now that they know Rich is here.
Right, and the enforcing of the, you know, the notices to businesses and the numbers on the homeowners, if that's generating revenue, I, that was something we probably hadn't been doing in the past prior to Rich. I'd like to know how much that's generating, if it is.
Yeah, I don't think the house numbers.
If he started giving out violations and fines and things like that.
Yep.
I also wanted to know, under Human Resources, where are we with a full-time assessor? Where, where are we in that conversation? Advertised.
So with, it's been advertised for the last two weeks, and we.
Okay, so it is posted.
It is posted.
Okay.
And we haven't had one respond.
Not one.
Where's the salary posted? Do you know, do you know what the range is?
I think she posted it almost at MMA, all around. I think she went above and beyond.
No, he said what, is the salary?
Oh, eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand.
Eighty.
That's the line item in the budget.
Okay.
That's obviously why we're not getting anybody.
Got it.
Could we just get a listing from you or Mary Ann about all the vacant positions for Town Hall?
Yep.
I, I think this is almost all of it, but there might be one or two lingering positions.
Because I didn't know about that assessor being posted, so that would be good to know.
Well, we had talked about it.
Right, yeah, I just didn't realize we had actually.
If we could just say what's open, when it was posted, and then sort of.
What the result, what the status results were.
Yeah, so just a quick status update.
Okay.
Just a quick little.
And then we're going to have one more vacancy in the Building Department coming up, beginning of next week when Diane Fallen retires.
Okay.
Oh, wow, she's retiring.
Yeah, she's retiring tomorrow, so I stay.
Okay.
And before you fill that, are you looking at efficiencies?
We are. Obviously, we're going to have to work with the union because that's our union position, but yes.
Okay.
And also, under Public Works, there's, you know, I know you guys are doing a ton with the crosswalks and athletic fields. What is the, what is the situation with the, with the athletic field at Block Sage with the turf?
Yep.
Is there someone, is there, there's something wrong with it? Are there something that needs to be repaired?
Yeah, so the turf, we've gotten, so we hired a company to come in, and they'll be in this Friday to repair all the seams that are written up, that have been torn up. It's a little bit more than that.
Right.
They're going to add some more coconut husk to it. They're going to do with a compaction test. But that's getting taken care of. Ideally, it would have been taken care of last week, but.
Okay, yeah.
Friday's the day.
Excellent. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Anybody else? Great, moving on. Thank you, Gino.
You're welcome.
Public comments. Public is welcome to comment. We will, please come up, state your name and your address, and public comment will be limited to three minutes tonight. Oh, Rachel Tardash, online, please. Go ahead, Rachel.
Rachel Tardash, hi, thanks. Rachel Tardash, seventy-one, Middlesex Ave. Two things, one, as my Big Blue Bargains board member hat, we thank you to everyone who came to the concert last Wednesday. We had a great time, a great turnout. We were collecting underwear and are continuing to do so in the store for the month of September, so new in-package, unused underwear, size forty to adult, that it's going to be distributed to the school nurse offices. And then, as my private citizen hat, I just want to thank Gino and everyone at the DPW. They, I sent an email on, I think, Thursday, and on Tuesday, the crosswalks on Middlesex were painted back where they've been paved over. So thank you, and my other thing I was going to talk about, I actually caught my neighbor tonight. We had discussed folks driving down Legere Way, which is listed sometimes on GPS as a real street, and so we were together and saw somebody drive through. She actually grabbed the DPW crew that was doing the paving and mentioned it to them, and they've already put the chain back up with the padlocks. So thank you for fixing a problem before I could even tell you about it. I really appreciate how quickly all of that was done, so thanks.
Thank you, Rachel, and thank you, DPW. Okay, seeing no additional public comment, we will move on to new and old business. First item is being tabled, discussion, possible vote, and appointment of the new TA. We are still ongoing negotiations, so we are tabling that. We are moving on to the second item, the second reading, discussion, and possible vote on the social equity policy. This is actually probably the third reading of the social equity policy, and we appreciate everybody for coming back with us a third time to have this conversation. But Marzy is here, so we promise it will go more smoothly than last time.
I'm glad to hear it. Happy to, to help. So as you, I'm, I'm not sure where you would like to start. I mean, unfortunately, I missed the last meeting. I apologize for that. But you should have in your package the copy of the social equity plan and host community agreement policy. That is something that is required by the Cannabis Control Commission, and you should see there are comments from KP Law, KP Law and Nicole Costanza has reviewed the, the policy and provided us guidance for the policy. It's based on model policies throughout the Commonwealth that the CCC has approved. It includes scoring criteria, and then just comment. The only, I'm not sure if you'd wanted to go through each of the definitions or address the comments, or one thing that I think that there was a discussion about was waiving of the, or reducing the fees for equity parties, which is number five on page number three. And that is something that KP Law and I think that our proponents agreed to waive or remove as part of this policy.
KP Law and who?
And our equity partners or the, the existing retailers.
Okay, so as we said last time, some of these require us to make some decisions, right? Like KP put in some standard language, so we just have to either say we agree it's this person or this amount or whatever. So maybe it makes sense to sort of just either go through each line by line or just say whether or not most folks agree with the standards that they have put before us. The comment related to consider waiving or reducing fees for equity parties, but, but not limited to applications fees and community impact fees, instead of consider it, we could say we waive the fee, correct?
That's correct, yes.
So we could just affirmatively say, based on not just we will consider waiving or reducing, but that we actually do waive the fee, or we reduce it by a certain.
What, what is the fee?
Or you can, you, well, you would vote on the fee.
You would vote on the fee.
You would vote on what the fee is.
No, but.
Or you could just strike the entire.
But I mean, we're, yeah, I, I thought we had talked last time about striking the entirety of five.
We did, but we didn't vote on anything, so.
No, understood.
Yes, so we discussed striking it in its, or, or just simply stating that we would waive the fee. So you wouldn't strike it, but you would just say we waive.
Fees for.
Fees for equity parties, and then go from there.
The town will waive the fees.
Can you just, one more time, Marzy, can you explain it for, for me, for us, for the public? This is kind of a, there's a give and take here, right? What do we get already from a social equity partner, and why would we waive this? What are the, you know, what are the burdens we have? We could say we're going to have a fee, but then we have to also justify the fee, right?
Exactly, so they should have fees. So right now, the benefit of hosting a social equity company or retailer is that in addition to receiving the three percent of gross revenues from the applicant. So as you know, we receive the funding through, passed over, through the Department of Revenue. So what happens is the, the retailer pays their fees to the state. The state then sends a lump sum funding to the, to the town. As a social equity entity, a marijuana operator or a cannabis retailer, we are eligible, or we are entitled to one percent of additional revenues. So by hosting a social equity company within the town, we in turn receive a total of four percent of revenue from the proceeds from the sale. So that's the benefit of, of hosting or having a social equity retailer in the town. In regards to the fees, so, you know, the towns and municipalities can charge an application fee when, when entities apply to, for a license, similar to any other licenses. And so this policy will be on, on our website, and that's something that we are required to have, that, let's say, there's somebody who is interesting in opening up a facility in Swampscott. As you know, we are limited, or town meeting voted to limit the number of operators that we will have in town to two, but the regulations from the state are that we should still have a policy in place in a very visible location. Our goal is, once you vote on this policy, we'll have it available on our website, and it's clear in regards to what the process is, what the scoring criteria is, and we'll just have a basic application that will be attached to it.
So it's to incentivize them being social equity partners with us because in. So, it's to incentivize them being social equity partners with us, because in, we give up the fees, but we get back that one percent, which could monetarily outweigh the fees.
Absolutely. And just, just that you would understand the, the scope, what the one percent represents. The other day, I met with two operators, owners of Turpin Journey, and we just, I was just curious, cause I thought you would also wanna know in terms of what does one percent mean in fees, right, to what we receive? And that would equal for this year alone, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that would translate to close to a hundred thousand dollars additional, in addition to the, to the three percent that we receive.
Thank you.
Good business.
Yep. Okay, so I think it sounds like we're all aligned with waiving the fees for equity partners. So, then the next section would be the way that KP Law wrote this, the town administrator has certain discussions, and then in order to score out the applications, and then the select board, I'm sorry, to administer the, the sort of admin piece of the applications, and then the select board scores them out. The town administrator will invite applicants who score sixty percent or higher to come before the select board as host, for host community agreements. So, each of those are like standard language that KP put in relative to the other social equity agreements that it's drafted. So, if anybody has an issue with that or wants to see a certain, you know, they wanna see only seventy, you know, people who score seventy or higher, whatever. I think, given the topic, and I think KP probably has much greater insight into this than I do, so I would defer to the standards that they've put forward and rely on them, that it's similar to other communities' standards. But does anybody have feedback about those paragraphs? Okay, so.
The only question I had from last time was, just to say publicly, the, what we've proposed here from KP Law, Turpin has seen, everyone's in agreement.
We have the right version now.
Yes.
We confirm.
We've confirmed we have the right version, and we reviewed the right version, and we're good, yes.
Just the only sort of edit that you would know is under Schedule B, just to change, it says town manager. It should release out town administrator, so just a typo, but, you know, so hopefully we'll update that.
Yep, on Schedule B. Mary Ellen, did you have something?
No, I was good with everything. I just wanted to get this done and not see it again.
So, then I guess the other, we would strike the, on Schedule A, we would strike the section which says included with the application fee is a dollar amount to cover, because we're waiving the fee. So, we're gonna strike that section. And the applications would go to the attention of the town administrator in conforming with the edits on, under procedure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, so motion to approve the social equity plan?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May I also request that, this one, I don't, I'm trying to think, we don't, we don't have your signatures, right? It's the other policies. I was just gonna find out if we can do electronic signatures, but not on this one, we'll talk about.
For the host community agreement?
Yes.
For that, yes, we will take that into consideration. So, I just wanna confirm the motion is as we just, with amended, as discussed.
Correct.
Wonderful. Okay, so that's off the list. Thank you so much. And we are moving on to the second reading, although I really think it's the third reason, reading and discussion and possible vote on the updated host community agreements for Turpin Journey and Calix Peak. And we have some of our lovely retailers here. Thanks for coming back. Appreciate you guys. And part of the conversation that we had left off on was just whether or not there were, oh, Peter DiAgostino is here too. He's raised his hand, so if we can make him available to speak. He is counsel, I believe, for Calix Peak.
Yep, he's their consultant.
Consultant, sorry. So, we'll look at the host community agreement for Turpin first, because that's the first in our package. Does any of the board members have any questions or concerns?
Same thing, Marzie, we're all in.
Yep, we, we had a meeting just the other day. We went over it. We do agree in principle for everything. There were just a couple of things that we wanted to bring up to your attention or maybe discuss. And then one of them is in regards to, on page, on the second page, I apologize that it's not dated. So, the first page, we all agree on the comments to strike the, the language that's crossed in green. I hope it appears green or in blue in your, in your document.
Yep.
The same thing on the, the second page or the following page. We will add at the very top of page two, it starts with whereas and or about. The date included there would be August first, twenty twenty-five. That's when the notice came in from the CCC in regards to a need to comply with the, with the regulations. So, the date would be added. All of the items that you see striked or crossed out, we both agree with the parties, everything that was listed in there. The, the question that we have is in regards to page number three would be, it starts with whereas the town anticipates that it will continue to incur additional expenses and impacts on the town, road, and other infrastructure system, law enforcement for protect, fire, excuse me, fire protection services, inspectional services, permitting and consultant services, and public help, as well as unforeseen impact, both quantifiable and unquantifiable on the town and as a result of the facility. Whereas the company desires to be responsible corporate citizen and to contribute a member of the business community of the town and require the town impacts associated with their, with and related to the facility in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter ninety-four G, and. We just wanted to, to talk about this with you, whether or not this would be included in terms of since the impact fees were waived, do we wanna include this in here? Is it necessary, or do we strike it, remove it? So, I, we'd like to have your comments on it.
And that was proposed by KP Law or by?
I think that was, that was proposed by KP Law, but since.
The striking was proposed by them.
No, the KP Law stated that we should talk about it with you, whether or not that's something that we wanted to, to.
I think the retailers propose to be stricken.
Yeah.
And KP Law said, in order to be comfortable doing that, we should talk to the board.
Okay, got it.
And I believe, Marzie, you, did you send an email about whether or not we've had impacts?
Yes, there were, there were no impacts.
Right, so to date, we have no, we've checked with fire department, police department.
There were no calls. There were, I think, like, one or two calls in regards to like alarms, fire alarm, but not in relation to the, to the business operation.
And there's, so there's been no calls in, what, the four plus years?
That's correct.
Facility, that Turpin's been open and, got it.
With Turpin.
Yep.
Not the other one.
Got it, yeah, this is just.
We're only talking about this.
Turpin only.
Yep.
Yeah. So, if we struck it previously, my, I, my opinion is we should strike it from the, from the HCA.
Yeah, I think if we have no basis for it, and we're not charging the fee anyways, then I feel comfortable striking it.
Yep.
If it turns out it is an issue in future host community agreements, we could put it back in. I don't foresee it will be, but if it, if it is, then this isn't agreement for forever, and we just add it back in it, because it's come up as an issue.
Exactly, yep. And then something that's included on page four, so it would be at the top of the page, it starts with cannabis, social equity, tax revenue. You see, that should be, that's crossed out as strike per KP Law. We had a discussion with, with the operators, and that was something that the owners had requested, that is there an opportunity to show the additional one percent in revenue on our, as part of our budget or as a revenue coming into the town? It's really, for us, it's really difficult. My sort of conversation has been that, I'm not sure, I, I don't think that that's, that's an option that we could do, because the DOR right now does not separate the amount of funding that comes in. And we really don't show revenue that the town brings in and fees from parking fees or, or building fees and others. I know we talk about it, but we don't have it, so I just wanted to point it, bring it to your attention, and whether or not this is something that you wanted to discuss, or just continue to have it crossed out.
I just have a question to the retailer about that. Is that because you want us to highlight how your social equity impact is coming to our table and, and helping us?
Yeah, and we had actually followed up with Marzie. We're actually okay either way, if it's included or not. The important thing for us is that the town's actually getting the money. And it seems like Patrick's been working with DOR to make sure that's happening, so.
Right.
We're kind of okay if it's not included at this point.
That's important to us, too. Appreciate that, yes. Okay, very good. Marzie, anything else?
Just the, the other item that I have would be number, new number nine or number ten crossed out, the following page.
Term.
The term of the agreement.
Mm-hmm.
We listed in here ten-year term, but I think that the maximum amount that we can have is eight years now, so I would wanna just make sure to change that, because that's the, that's the new regulation. And obviously, the operators are, are fine with it, cause that's the max that we can have. So, I would just wanted to bring that to your attention and include that.
Okay, so you're changing that to eight per requirement?
Yeah, ten, change ten to, to eight years.
Okay.
Okay.
In regards to, and just of the final.
And then, Marzie, we're, we're making sure that we're, that this is referencing the correct sections, like on the, on the next page. It, it just talks about.
Yep.
In the event of termination of this agreement, the company shall immediately cease all operations, provided that the company shall be responsible for payments due under Sections three dash five of the agreement. We just wanna make sure that that's, that's referenced properly.
Three, four, it should be listed in there, three, four, cause there's a reference, because we removed the other one, yes. Yep, so that's, that's another one, you're correct.
I think one of the other things that had come up is reference to a parking plan?
Yes, and we have.
There was, you have one now?
Yeah, we have a, we have a, we have, we attach a parking plan, and I hope that Diane forwarded to you a parking plan.
Oh, thanks.
And a, as well as engineering specification for auto control and HVAC systems. You should have it, and that was submitted as part of.
Oh, it wasn't in our prior packet. Got it, now we have it, perfect. And then there's, we should just say, attention town administrator on the notice provision.
Yep, absolutely. The next one in terms of inspections, there was just a, a comment that was added by attorney for Turpin, and then just something that is probably best practices, and it addresses CCC's concerns for unauthorized individuals entering space that's not public space or within the operation. So, that's just standard language. Okay. We have a copy of the plan. Oh, the other thing too that we wanted to update is the hours of operations to be in line with both of the operators, to have the same hours, that the hours of operations will be from eight AM to ten PM.
Wait a second, just, you're saying both operators, meaning both stores?
Yes.
One is in a retail, retail location, and one is in a neighborhood? And the one in the neighborhood opens up at what, nine right now?
Yes, so, so they're open at nine, but, so there's like a, an interesting concept that the CCC is providing, is that stating that there, you should sort of be really specific in regards to the hours of operation. Although, as you heard probably in the past, that Turpin Journey is, although the staff is there an hour before, and I think that you had a, sort of like, like closing time, like ten or fifteen minutes before, so then they can wrap up the operations. I think that the new and current standard is to just list the hours regardless if it's, you know, staff are there sort of organizing or preparing for the sale, they just wanted to have the, the hours listed as standard hours.
But if you have standard hours listed, and the staff is there getting ready, but they're really not open, now you're, aren't you introducing possible confusion to the, to the consumer? And aren't you introducing more people hanging out outside of a store?
So, I think that that's, maybe you could address it by, you know, just list the hours of operation on the, on the door. I'm not sure if that's how you addressed it in, for your hours?
Yeah, I think we just list our hours of operation to customers as like nine AM to ten PM. And then I think the, I think the reason why it's requested to be opening at eight, I think that was Pete and Calix Peak had requested that. I think just to be crystal clear that if there's a delivery that arrives at the facility before nine, that it can be accepted. I think was the reason why.
And then Pete, maybe if you can, if you could unmute and maybe just comment on the hours of operation? I know, obviously, it's not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, um, thank you, Marzie and Chair Member Sport. Thank you for working so diligent on leave, on this. We know it's been a couple of iterations. We are agnostic as to the approach. The approach that was proposed by KP Law was to include hours of operation. And the way it's defined in the agreement, it would mean essentially any licensed activity. So, we could amend the paragraph in its entirety to say retail hours, meaning the hours were open to the public, and then we could amend the hours to match, you know, the nine AM opening. So, we're agnostic candidly as to what the town and the board's preference is. If we're gonna call it hours of operation, and the way it's written, that encompasses everything we would potentially do, then we would need to have employees in prior to the store actually opening, so they could do inventory checks, receive deliveries, so on and so forth. So, that's the approach that KP Law offered, which we're fine with. Or if the board would prefer to do it based on retail hours, we would just have to amend the paragraph and amend the hours to match that. And it's, you know, we're, we're agreeable to other approach. We, we just followed KP's lead. So, we're, we're good either way, if you wanna do that. It would just require unfortunately repaying that paragraph, but we're happy to do it.
Why don't we just leave the hours of operation, but state the retail hours differ by whatever hour, like.
By an hour.
By an hour, yeah, just say like, you can leave the hours of operation the way it is, because that allows you to receive deliveries and whatever you need to do during that time. But then it says, you know, just add a sentence that says, the retail hours for sale are nine to ten. So, you update.
Is that what, is that what the retail hours are for Califex, nine to ten?
I believe so, yes.
Calix, yes, that's nine to ten.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's nine to ten, like Monday to Saturday, and then Sundays are eleven to six, open to customers.
That's for Calix.
For both of us.
Oh, for both of you, you're the same?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the eight, you're just looking for that extra eight o'clock hour to cover your deliveries if they're before nine, because you need the ability to operate to receive deliveries?
Correct.
Okay. So, I say leave it, my suggestion would be to leave it as hours of operation, make it eight AM, and then just state that they will only be open for retail from nine to ten, which allows them that one hour to operate, but not sell. That's what KP Law needs to feel comfortable. Great.
I'm good with that.
All right.
And then I think all the other changes are both parties agreed upon.
Okay. So, that works for, do we wanna approve the, entertain a motion for this one, and then we'll move on to the next one?
I think there, Marzie, I think there might have been one more. There was the, let's see, page one, two, three, the last paragraph. We were proposing to get rid of point six, which is the very last sentence on the, on the, the page, which reads, the company ceases up, if, basically, if the company ceases operations for a period of greater than sixty days, then that opens up potential for the license to be removed or taken away. And we were hoping that that would be removed from the agreement that's, right here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it. Okay, so that was.
So, this is in.
Where's that?
Right above number nine, so sorry.
So, under term, the same section we were looking at, which is sub, nine now was ten. On the bottom of that page, it says, it, it reflects removed in our version. It says, the company's, the company's licenses revoked or suspended by the CCC, or as removed, nine, the company ceases operation of the facility in the town for a period of greater than sixty days. So, we do reflect the strike.
Okay, great.
My chair, it's Pete. I'm just, I, I don't know if we're talking about two different paragraphs, so I'm just trying to keep up with the red lines.
Section nine labeled term?
Okay, my section nine's labeled cease of operations, secession of operations.
We are, we're in the Turpin agreement, we're not in the Calix.
Okay, okay, my apologies.
That's okay. All right, so.
Yeah, I just want, the, the language, I, I guess the secession operations language should mirror between the two entities. I, I think the town generally should have one standard for how licenses are done in the town, and I think our. and I think our language might be slightly different, so, you know, certainly defer to the board on that, but given that the businesses are the same, and there's one, there should be one standard for how the licenses are treated, I would think, or I'd offer that for the board to consider, actually.
And then Pete, that also states 60 days. So I think you saw that, right, the change? The ninety days isn't a strike?
Yeah, that's, that's, I don't have that changed. I did not receive that back.
Oh, all right, I'm sorry, yes.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's sixty.
That's why I asked. I did not see that. I don't have that changed back.
Yeah, so we're at 60 days for, for Calix as well, or Local Cannabis, 60 days as well.
No, so we struck that line from chirping. So it was at 60, but then it has been stricken. So, so.
So we will strike it here as well, then?
Yeah, so if we could just approve this first, and then move on to the next one, we can make the same changes. That would be great.
We have a motion.
So we have a motion by David.
No, motion by Danielle, seconded by me.
Seconded by David. All those in favor of approving the chirping host community agreement?
Aye.
Aye. Fantastic. Thank you guys very much. We appreciate the process.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Calix Peak. There has been some requests that we have some continuity. So, let's see.
And leave under this agreement, Madam Chair, it's paragraph eight.
Okay.
Under the, on the last version I have, I'll say.
Yeah, so section eight says, "Cease of operation." "In the event the company closes or ceases operation for an extended period of time, not less than," it said 90, and then it was struck, struck and said 60. So I think the question is whether or not we strike that in totality or strike it to reflect the same benefit that we've given chirping journey. So.
I think we should be consistent.
Yeah. So, I mean, each individual deal obviously is negotiated separately, but they're on our agenda together and back to back, so I think the benefit is that we're doing this openly in public, and it is what it is at this point.
Right. Is there any reason why there's any difference?
Well, they didn't ask for it to be struck, and these guys did.
Did they object to it being struck?
No, they would, now they would like it to be.
Now they want it struck.
Right. And we did it on the other ones.
Yeah, we had originally asked, Madam Chair, we'd originally asked for more time. I did not realize that that request for additional time had been struck, and I did not get that red line back, so I apologize. I just, I don't have that edit, so I didn't have the opportunity to respond to it.
Okay.
So to your, to your point, I'm just responding to it now, because I wasn't aware of that prior to, just now.
Yep. So I think what we should do is, we should strike it, KP needs to just make sure that it's consistent with its strike and make sure that they reflect the same benefit given to chirping journey, based on the edits, so. And then for section nine, we should update that to eight years, as you've just discussed on the other. That's the term. And as Marzy said, we can only go up to eight years. For the hours of, I'm sorry, I'm going backwards now, because we've moved backwards, but if we go back to the beginning, it looks like.
Is there, is there a reason why we're just not like, everything that we just did on one, we're doing on the other?
Sure. It's not the same agreement, that's why, because the language is different.
Okay.
But conceptually, yeah, we could. If they use the same form, it would be great, because you would just say, "All the things we just did on the first form, we're gonna put in the second form." You could still do that. KP would have to take the first form and then make sure it's reflected, but. Is that the motion that you want to reflect there?
Well, you know, I obviously am missing a nuance here, so. For two.
So I think in the hours of operation under section I, we need to make the same update, so that the hours of operation are reflected, but the retail hours are only nine to 10. And then, Mary Ellen, you brought up the, the question in the comments is, "Is the town amenable to these hours?" I brought up the last comment you had made about one being in a mall area that's retail, and this one being in a neighborhood, so are we comfortable with those hours?
Yes.
Yes.
I am.
Okay. Mary Ellen, did you have a comment?
Well, I'm just, you know, my concern is, it is a retail, it is a, one's retail in a retail environment, and the other is in a neighborhood environment. We've got, one, we have no complaints whatsoever, the other one, we have multiple complaints that have come in over people parking, people sitting outside homes, that type of thing. So, I don't know, I don't have, I don't have a definite opinion on it, I just have a question on it, whether or not, because it's in a retail neighborhood, if we should be opening up earlier, if it would have an effect on the neighbors.
I would think if the hours of operation were greater, then people would come over a longer span of time, and therefore, the parking wouldn't be an issue. But maybe we can just ask the business to be more mindful of the parking situation. I know you guys do lease some parking spots from us that are underutilized.
If I could just maybe clarify.
Please.
I've been, had multiple conversations with Pete and with the management at Local Cannabis. The parking issue is, it's, it's not, I don't want to call them like average customers, it's, it's individuals who utilize company trucks and non-personal vehicles who, you know, shop at the, at the store. So what happens is that, I would imagine it's perception, they don't want to drive, you know, if, let's say, if, if.
You had the town of Swampscott electric vehicle magazine.
Exactly. If it's parked there, then it's really questionable, or, you know, so I think that that's what the issue is.
Right.
You know, we have been dealing with some, you know, individuals maybe smoking on the sidewalk or the curb cuts, so that's something else that we've reached out through Pete to the manager, and they try to address it as the issues arise.
Okay.
So we could always just amend it next year if there's multiple complaints.
Yep.
So we're leaving ourselves open there that if it goes sideways, we can fix it.
Absolutely.
Yep. We can, and we appreciate the effort in helping us with a problem you don't necessarily have a solution for either, but.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Appreciate the diligence. So I guess we will entertain a motion to approve Calix Peak host community agreement in line with the changes we've just made to chirping journey, which KP Law will reflect.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you for joining us and coming back.
Thank you, everybody. Greatly appreciate your time.
Thanks, Pete.
Absolutely. Okay, moving on to
Poet Laureate.
Our next topic of discussion, the poet laureate. So y'all allowed me to take this and run with the, going back to the library and requesting that they participate or help us facilitate the poet laureate conversation. I.
Seems like it's getting thrown back here.
I did that, and here I am, humbly coming back to you all. So the library takes on a lot of programming, and they felt like they could be part of this process, but didn't feel like they should be, could be the only part of this process. I thought that Neil was gonna be here, but is he online? Okay. So basically, we have a proposal in front of us, just for the folks at home. The rationale for the Board of Library Trustees and the library staff asking for it to come back to the Select Board is that this is a civic and cultural role representing the entire community, and it's not just a library function, and they'll remain a strong supporter and a partner, but should not be the sole authority for this. So, touche, library, and here we are. Agreed, maybe, but we do want to see that this is happening, and that we are, you know, promoting the arts and facilitating the program. So the recommendation that the Board of Trustees put forward is that a committee be appointed by the Select Board. They select one, that they suggest one or two Select Board members, one library trustee or the director or.
Two library trustees?
No, one library trustee is what it says here. One, you can't have two, because there's only three of them.
Right.
One representative from Swampscott Schools, and then one or two community members with an arts or cultural background. Could include former poet laureates, and the responsibilities of the, of their scope would be to draft up some eligibility requirements and application process, a judging criteria, and then to put forward the process, right, and to recommend a candidate to the Select Board for appointment. They definitely have done some of the legwork in as far as, you know, what this might look like. So they have requested an annual stipend of $500 to $1,000 to honor the poet laureate's contributions. So I know that there is a cultural commission in town. I don't know if that's something that they could receive grant funding for. Marzy is probably a better answer of that question. But there could be also a partnership with the Friends of the Library or some other supporting program through the library in order to facilitate the $500 to $1,000. So basically, their hope, the hope is that the timeline would be that we would support the approval of the process and the formation of the committee, that we would appoint a committee rather soon thereafter, and they would spend the winter drafting guidelines, and then open the application process sometime between the middle to end of the winter. That by spring, we would be able to appoint a poet laureate for 2026, and that there would be some summer programming held related to the new appointed poet. So the poet laureate folks, I don't know, really, you guys are just a band of merry poet supporters. Yes, please, if you wouldn't mind, that would be great. They, I don't, I don't think, have you guys seen what the library proposed? And then you counter-proposed, basically. Oh, hold on one second, I think we're gonna turn your mic on. Too sweet. Thank you. If not, we can utilize Marzy's.
All set?
Yeah, thank you.
Steve Vinaconey, 26 Rock Ave, poet laureate, year 2015. We basically agree with the proposal that the library developed. In doing some research on how other towns set up their poet laureate program, this idea really is very consistent with those other towns, so we're definitely on board with the desire for the Select Board to appoint the committee and to the committee to take the lead in terms of the organizing and developing how they would choose a poet laureate. The, what I did include in the packet is the information from Rockfort in North Andover, which is similar to what we're proposing. And we're proposing on our end that, definitely that the committee be a standing committee, that it would have function passed just a year of the appointment, and they would have ongoing help for the poet laureate, and also try to provide some art, cultural aspect to the community as well. And we're looking for, this is typical for the town anyway. I think I'm making a point that you already know, that the appointments be staggered for one year for the one person, two years for the next, for two people, and three years for the next two people, so that as each position empties, there is still a body of people on the committee who can continue the work. And that's very typical of the town. The, a poet, the absolutely different change that we would propose is has to do with the membership itself, which has to do with the the specific people who are identified. In the first case, with the Select Board members, in our case, in our proposal, we're simply saying that the Select Board or a Select Board picks a representative to be on the committee. Secondly, there is the Board of Trustee or Director from the library. But in the number three position, we really feel that there should be a designated one for a poet laureate to be on the committee. This is nothing to do to diss our school department, which is wonderful, but in order to assure that there is a presence for poet laureates. And therefore, the next, then there are two other positions that would be chosen either by, I mean, by the, by the Select Board, who could also be poet laureates, or could be someone from the school, or someone from other arts, visual arts, or any other drama, that art that is in the town. So those are the real differences in, it's not really, it's really in addition to their proposal, because I, we, I talked to Jonathan Nichols about this. This was something, it was something I had supplied, provided him, he doesn't have time to put it into his report. So he just, I just added an addendum. So, thank you very much for your help, and I hope that you approve this, and we can move forward with the appointments. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so what we would be looking for today is, if you guys wanted to digest this and bring it back before a vote, or we could just vote to approve creating, creation of a committee, the poet laureate.
So we would just be voting to the creation of a committee, not all of the lines within there?
So I think it's important, we say what, how the committee is gonna be made up. So the committee will be
Right.
five members or seven members, whatever we're looking at, and then if it's, so both recommendations reflect a Select Board member or a representative, I think it's great to say "or a representative", because there's lots of boards and committees, and if we have a passion for it, we should raise our hand and say it. But if not, then we can choose somebody who does, and then help facilitate it to its best ability. I think it's important that because of the marry, marrying to the library, that the library director or
Trustees.
A trustee is, is on this committee.
Right.
Because it's going to be, I think a lot of the programming that comes from it will probably be at the library. And a lot of the benefit to it will be directly related to the library community, so. They have a representative from Swampscott Schools. These folks proposed a former poet laureate. There's still two community members thereafter, so we can still propose one former poet laureate, one Swampscott School community member, and one member of the community, if we wanted to do that. So it's just that sort of is flexible. Or we can make the committee larger, although I caution committee larger, because.
I think we should.
I think we should just stick with.
I think we should stick with that recommendation.
Okay.
So I'm happy to make a, to make a motion.
Well, I think, but adding, with the, with the amended, a Select Board or a Select Board appointee.
Yep, so that's what the poet laureates suggest, and then a library trustee or director, the one former poet laureate, and then two community members with a arts or cultural background.
Diane, can you start advertising this?
Yeah, because we can consider, I mean, right now in our, when we look at applications, it would be great if we got one from the school, but if we don't, we don't want to hold a spot open waiting for a school. But we should absolutely identify the, like, the teachers at the school, and, you know, I would love to see a high school appointment, student appointed to engage in this if one is available, but by having two community members, we can still absolutely do that. And then that way, we're not hamstringing, if we don't have one, to have an open spot, so.
So motion to approve the establishment of the poet laureate committee as presented in our packet?
Reflective of the poet laureate.
The amended, as, yes, yes, sorry.
Second.
So are we just doing, okay, so we're just.
We're just putting together the committee.
Just the, I mean, not the rest of the proposal.
Diane will start advertising it tomorrow.
Yep, and then I think it is important that we stagger the appointments, just like we do for all other committees, that it's reflected of that, so that we can rotate folks in who still have a touch point to what works.
How long have you been terms? Like, you want to stop one year, then two, and then three, something like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's.
The three-year term would be the normal term.
The three-year term would be the normal term.
Stagger.
Would, yeah. Yep, so we would eventually end up where everybody has a three-year term, but it would be staggered.
Yeah.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you very much for joining us. And thank you to Jonathan and the library staff for helping us come to this decision. Appreciate the energy that's put in by you guys and by Jonathan. Looking forward to our 2026 poet laureate. Alrighty, that concludes old and new business. We are on to the consent agenda.
Number five.
Oh, just kidding, sorry, Doug.
Do we have the information?
There is no information.
Yeah.
So the, number five, discussion impossible vote to modify the Code of Conduct regarding select board approval and non-standard expenses. Doug and I have been going back and forth about this. We committed to having a conversation about this based on the invoice, we'll just say. And so I sort of was pushing back on Doug to say, what are the edits? What does it look like?
Yep.
And he was saying.
Here they are.
Have a conversation.
Well, here they are.
Oh, great.
Okay, so we have a Code of Conduct for the select board, right? And we have a chapter seven on financial management, which lists a bunch of things. Town administrator's office, I won't read them all, but there's a very small section on financial management. If you wish me to read it, I can, but I'm basically suggesting the addition of one bullet that says, "Select board shall not expend town funds without the town administrator's authority and not without select board vote for any funds above $1,000." Case closed.
You have a sec, did you say it's section seven?
Did you send this to us in advance?
No.
No.
I didn't. It's a lot to digest.
There is no.
I can read it again.
Well, there is no chapter seven, so you're adding a whole chapter?
No, I have a, the one on line.
The Code of Conduct?
Yeah, I have financial, what am I looking at?
I don't know.
I guess something different. Oh.
Okay, can we, can we table this if we don't even know where it is?
Oh, okay, so.
Sorry, Procedures, Policies and Regulations Manual.
Okay, so what I will do then is, we will, we will write this out.
Okay.
When was the last time we approved that?
This one says 2022.
I thought we just approved those.
Didn't we just approve all these?
We just approved it.
Yeah.
We just approved that.
So we need to post.
But not, this is not the Code of Conduct.
Updated version on.
No, it's the procedures.
On the website.
Yeah, this one, this is what's on the website.
Yep.
Okay.
Right.
I hope so. All right.
Well, regardless of which, doesn't matter if it's, this is the most current version on the website, still take care of it. But I don't care.
We can vote on it.
Can vote on it, we can think deeply about it.
I'm, I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable with it. I just, we didn't, I just want to make sure we didn't strike anything in that paragraph. But I'm, I'm.
Conceptually.
When we, when we, that's all.
Sorry. Conceptually, we all said, we were sort of thinking about a way to make sure that this doesn't happen, go forward.
Yeah.
I think what is just, the specifics matter. So if we could just get, I, I will, or Diane can, or whatever, make a reflection of the red line, send it all out to us. We can digest it, and on the next meeting, we will put this on to.
Consent agenda, probably, right?
Sure, yes.
Yeah, because I think we're, I think we're good, we just want to see it.
Do you have this marvelous?
Sentence?
Sentence.
And where it's going to go?
Do you want me to restate it, or?
Just send it to me when you get a chance, and then I'll add it to the one that we approved back on this.
Okay.
And send it out.
I'll talk to you after.
Please, thank you.
Okay. And we will, and it will be an item on the agenda to modify the process and procedure manual, so the Code of Conduct.
Yeah, we need that too, yeah.
So we couldn't vote on it today anyways, because we're not modifying the right document. Okay, approval of the consent agenda. This is discussion impossible vote to allow a two and a half by eight-foot banner to be hung at Phillips Park fence for Swamscott youth hockey. A version of it is on here. It's the Learn to Skate banner. You've seen it out and about multiple times. And then the vote to approve the minutes, eight twelve, eight eighteen, eight nineteen, and eight twenty-six.
Motion to approve, second.
David, you have something on the tip of your tongue before I.
Oh.
You're good?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, select board time. We were so robust last meeting that now nobody has anything this meeting.
I can go first. I just want to thank Nate Beishine, Nathan Kent, and Joe Dulett. It's been a couple weeks where we go late into the night, we forget to thank them. So thank you once again for bringing this to people of Swamscott and beyond. And I just want to reiterate, the senior center, we now have a new electric van, which is pretty exciting. The solid waste advisory committee is working very hard on a fix-it clinic, and they should have that up and going, I think, within the next 30 days. Just trying to work out a couple more details, legal details for the waiver, and.
We're not going to be touching bikes.
Yeah, we just, my recommendation is we do not touch a bicycle, but we just work that out, work that out in our, in our waiver. And that is all, I have to report on my committees.
I have a very brief.
Doug?
Climate action would like to come and do a brief update over the next meeting or two, particularly with a signage project that they've been working on for quite some time that they'd like to come and present to the select board. Technically, the town administrator has the authority to put some signs and town property, but they'd like to bring it forward for a little public review, preview, and then give a general committee update. Because we are a climate leader, not to steal their thunder, but we, as you may recall, we are now eligible for some very serious-sized grants. You know, $150,000 for design of things, or up to $1 million for things like geothermal or solar or that type of thing. So the committee is in some deliberations with MACS, et cetera, on what those criteria should be, what the proposed project should be. And so they would, you know, bring a little update about that, maybe not a final recommendation, but that's their request, and I will have the date, whether or not they would really, really prefer, it's an outside party that would be part of it. So whether or not ideally it would be at the next meeting or the first one in October, I'll let you know soon.
Just a quick question about that, Doug. Is it, if the building is a town building, but it's being leased to a third party, would we still be eligible for those grant options?
We should be.
Yes, it's, it remains a town building.
Because at the next meeting, we'll have the folks from.
Well.
What?
There's, there was, we had discussion with, about this with some state officials, and they had a different opinion. But I think we don't have an absolute on that. We have to really do a little bit more research.
Okay.
This might be a benefit we're offering to, as developers come in or something, that we have this opportunity if there are buildings being refurbished.
Yeah, it's all.
No? Why are you looking at me like that?
Because I'm trying to figure out what you're talking about.
The Haddlet. The Haddlet.
Yeah, that is not, that's not on the list, but okay, yeah.
Anybody else? Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved, a second.
Back to an old habit. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Aye.